All right, let's call the study session on Monday at April 9 to order. I see there's no vote going. Okay, nice to see you back.
I think it's for the floor.
I know, we want to stay on time tonight. Issue update, does anybody have anything? As the mayor would say, for the good of the pot. No? Okay. Introduction to our new human resources director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to take the opportunity tonight, we're really excited to welcome Deanna Giordano as our new HR director. As you know, we used to have an HR director or an HR department. We transitioned to an internal services department. Now, we're back to having a pure HR department. And Deanna's been here just two weeks and one day. And feels like two months because we kept her really busy. But we asked her to come here tonight and just tell you a little bit about herself, her history, her experience, and I guess that's it.
Welcome. On day one of week three. Just kind of counting days over again. But I'm Deanna Giordano. I have over 25 years of human resources experience, primarily in public sector, or all in public sector, actually. I have a bachelor's degree in business administration with an emphasis in human resources. I'm certified as a senior HR professional as well. We've been certified since over 15 years. And so my most recent experience was with Travis County, which is in Austin. Travis County encompassed the city of Austin in Austin, Texas. And prior to that, I worked for about 25 years with the city of Austin in their HR office. And so I have a vast breadth of HR experience in all things HR. So everything from employee relations, to benefits, to compensation, to really doing some active progressive recruiting and making, you know, the city a benefit, an employer of choice. And I look forward to bringing all of that experience here to City of Aurora and making Aurora an employer of choice for employees. So there's lots going on. I kind of looked at the city from the outside lens, kind of looking in thinking, it's a small city, right? But it's not. So the first couple of weeks on the job, I kind of learned it's a large city and we're moving in that direction. There's lots of growth that's going on in and around the city. I don't have to tell you guys that. But with that, you're always kind of looking at the lens from HR, making sure that we're providing, you know, well-structured compensation strategy and philosophy for individuals, maybe potential employees in the future. We're looking at our benefits package, looking at our risk and mitigating liability. And so kind of that full breadth of experience that I have, I look forward to utilizing here with City of Aurora. And thank you very much for having me.
Welcome.
Thank you. I want to know why she doesn't have a Texas accent.
I've heard that a couple of times. So they said, you don't really have that southern drawl. I go, no, but I use y'all a lot. So if you hear me say y'all, that's you all. Any other questions?
They know all about y'all.
You mean all y'all?
Good. Thank you. I'm glad to be welcome.
Thank you, welcome. Welcome. All right. Consent calendar. Does anyone want to pull anything off? Are we happy to send it forward?
Oh, no, I think I'm just in time. I was just going to send tickets.
Okay, so we'll move our consent calendar forward.
Okay, 3A. Oh, yes. Sorry, I just had a quick question on the consent calendar. Is there, I just was wondering why, what happened with Norman in Washington, just curious, because he has experience on it.
I couldn't hear what you said. What happened?
Yeah. Do you know who I'm talking about?
Yes.
One of the golf committees. Curious, yeah. One of the men who applied to the golf committee actually had extensive golf management experience working in the golf industry, and I'm just curious of the rationale behind.
Because they didn't choose him to approve? That doesn't mean that when we get to the floor, we can't add him back in.
Right. Just to add, they interviewed all the candidates and then they make their recommendations. So it doesn't mean, you know, if another spot had opened, he probably would have made it.
Thank you. We don't always go by their recommendations. Sometimes we buck the system. Okay. Thank you. 3A.
This item is a resolution expressing support for legislation facilitating the construction of affordable, single-family attached housing in Aurora and throughout the state. It's here at the request of Councilmember Bob Roth. This is kind of an outgrowth of the discussion that has been going on for a number of years concerning the Colorado Construction Defect Action Reform Act, SODAR, and we've had some legislation in 2017 that did amend the act. So the idea at that time was required HOAs to obtain the approval of a majority of the unit owners before initiating construction defect action. So this is really an issue that impacts condominium and townhome construction. And I believe the resolution is designed to go back to the legislature and say some additional work needs to be done. I'll go ahead and let Councilmember Roth kind of take it from here. But this has been through committee and has been moved forward to study session tonight. You'll note that it is dual listed. The idea is to at least notify our delegation prior to the close of the session. And as you know, we are getting towards the end of the session, which is, I believe, midday?
May night.
May night. Okay, so not quite midnight, a little early. Hey, Ross?
Yeah, this is something that I've been wanting to bring forward for a while, but I was kind of hoping that maybe the state legislature would make some moves on it, and they haven't. This is something that's been in front of the construction and development industry for a number of years now. It's been actively lobbied and associated with the last four or five state legislatures to talk about the construction defects litigation concerns that are there. There were a couple of questions that came up that I wanted to clarify. One was whether or not this was intended to try to get a bill in place this year, and that's certainly not the case. I know that we're too late for that. I just want to start the conversation in earnest. There was a conversation about whether or not legislative leadership is on board with this. I can tell you that so far, they have not been on board with it because they've defeated it the last four or five years running. And this is, in my opinion, this city council, previous city council, has weighed in on this. And this is just in my mind, taking the next step to be more proactive, to say that we want for this to be something that they seriously consider in future legislative sessions. It's in the resolution itself, but I can tell you that nationwide, this type of product, the attached for sale housing is about, is between 22 and 25% of the housing market. In the state of Colorado, it's about 3% of the housing market. There's various opinions of why that is. But I can tell you from being a development construction professional, that it's not the contractors necessarily, it's not the developers necessarily, it's the banking industry and the insurance companies. The banking industry won't finance this type of product, and the insurance companies won't insure this type of product because of the fear of construction defects litigation. I'll also say that there's conversation about, well, if the contractors just built a better quality product. And I'll say that the contractors are bound to build according to the International Building Code, National Electrical Code, National Plumbing Code. It goes through all the design standards of the architect and engineering firms. It goes to the city for approval, then the city inspectors inspect the product. So it's not that people are just throwing up hatchsticks and it's defective. Are there, sometimes, is there shoddy workmanship occasionally? Absolutely. Just like in a vehicle or anything else. But this is something that will help the conversation to getting this type of product, which primarily benefits two types of people. The people that are looking to purchase their first home, and the people that are middle-aged to older that are looking to downsize. And this is a product that is appealing to those groups. So I'll leave it at that. And the reason it's dual listed is because, as Mr. Hyman said, I'd like for it to be at least part of the conversation before May 9, understanding that that's all that would be as part of the conversation.
Now, I will say that you did start the conversation because we started getting emails from everywhere. So you are starting the conversation. Yes?
I want to speak in support of the ordinance as well. I've talked to, coming in from the Chamber of Commerce, people talking about affordable housing. First off, the drastic need for it, especially for entry-level workers, especially for those parents whose children have graduated from college and returned home and can't move out. Our dreams, our goals for the TOD locations, where we had hoped that we could have people own their own properties adjacent to the train, the metro locations, the locate, or the people that are moving out of, or who would like to downsize. Again, I agree with what Councilmember Roth said. The part about the insurance is also, I've also validated that, that as long as the insurance companies aren't putting up the money for the, to deal with the builders, the developers, these won't happen. So if you, and this isn't a red or blue issue either. When you look at California, when you look at Texas, when you look at New York City, when you look at Florida, when you look at, so many states have successful laws on, in the book, on the books, where all we would have to do is copy the best practices from those states in order to bring condominiums to Colorado. So I would have liked to have seen this earlier, but I think that having it come at the end of the season, so it's the beginning, so it's in the front of next year when the session begins, I think is very important. We need to send that message. We need condominiums in Aurora.
Councilwoman Gare?
So, and I agree, this is important, to get this to the legislature and ask them to take another look at doing something. I think the economics behind it is that if we build, start building condominiums in Aurora again, or really throughout the metro area, let's just say 2,000 condos are built in Aurora in the next three years. Those 2,000 condo units are probably going to empty out apartment buildings because people in apartments would like to buy something, but they can't afford it. So the young people in apartments go into the condos, they now are homeowners, and you have some percentage of those 2,000 apartments that are going to be vacant. When apartments become vacant, landlords lower the rent to fill them back up. So over time, the condo market is going to lower the rents because it's going to create vacancies in the apartments. And on the opposite side of that, if you have seniors that want to downsize, and they can sell their 2,500 square foot home and move into a 1,200-foot condo that better fits their lifestyle, their home goes on the market, and when you have more houses on the market, the prices tend to come down. So in both cases, at both ends of the spectrum of millennials to seniors retiring, you help the affordable housing picture by having condos built in Aurora and the metro area.
Yeah. And I agree with what's been said by Councilmember Gare and Gruber and Roth. I think, you know, we've been dealing with this issue for years, as mentioned. And I think all we're doing at this point is just making it, making it clear to the legislators that we think it's an important issue to be, to contemplate again. And by having this go forward now, so that at the beginning of the next session, it can be, I mean, possibly they could come up with a bill that might address some of these issues. I think it's important to address the housing market the way it is right now and to hopefully create some more affordable housing.
Thank you. I think this is probably going to go to the floor. So rather than have the same debate twice, I think we should just, we'd like to move to take it to the floor.
And that's fine. I just thought, the more we could get talked after here, the less we've been talking here. It doesn't matter.
I guess what I have a question about is, okay, we do this resolution, and it's a resolution, it's a statement saying we need to do this. But then I'm all about, what is the action plan? How are we going to get down, you know, talk to the legislature, actually, not just one conversation. Sit down with them at different times before the legis, you have to start early with this stuff. You can't just say, okay, here's the resolution, and, you know, we're going to have this one conversation before the end of the legislative session. It has to be continuous. So what is the action plan for this? I mean...
So a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to add on to one thing on the insurance, because it's not that there's not insurance products available, but what the insurance product that's available to cover the risk that the insurance companies see is about $8,000 per unit. And that's why some units are being built in the $600,000, $700,000 range, price range, because they can absorb an $8,000 insurance hit without it affecting them. If we're building $250,000 condos in Aurora, it can't take that $8,000 hit and be competitive. So I want to make that clear. To the question of what the steps are, I think it's not a matter of having one conversation. It is a matter of having many conversations, and it's probably, more than anything, a matter of joining coalitions of other people who have started this conversation five years ago. So the Associated General Contractors of Colorado, the American Architects Association, the Associated Builders and Contractors, the engineers, they've all been having these conversations for a couple of years, or, excuse me, for over five years now. So it's a matter of, in my opinion, this body saying us to. We are, this is important to our constituents as well, so we want to join in that conversation.
And I would like to tag on to that, too. You've chaired, Pfizer, you've been on that committee. I've been on that committee several times. And we've always made appointments with our legislators. Now, some of them have stood us up and didn't come. But that, this was one of our main talking points to our legislators, to talk about how this is hurting Aurora, how this is helping the prices to go up and stay up. And I think our lobbyists can back me up on that, you know.
Well, I testified on one of the bills, so I understand.
Right. So I think we just have to keep, have to keep after it and having conversations with our lobbyists, any chance we get, and meet them one-on-one. Yes, ma'am?
Can I, so what Allison said, considered a motion?
It was intended to be.
Okay. Because I also see it, like, since this is going to be double-listed, which, as a new Councilmember, I didn't realize you could do, but I understand that that's completely vague.
We could talk about this all night if we wanted.
I'm sure. Well, I figured that we might as well just move it to the floor for discussion.
All right. So is everybody okay? Let's move it to the floor. Consider it moved. 3B. Mr. Roth, is going to do this?
Happy to introduce this one. This resolution actually started in committee by Councilmember Richardson. It was study session, actually went to the floor. Council tabled it at that time because they wanted to make sure that they had sexual harassment prevention training. That has now occurred. There were several concerns, mostly cleaning up language in the resolution. Worked with Mr. Gruber and Mr. Richardson to clean up the language in the resolution to major points. If you look at Section 1, that's going to require council at a future date to rework their council policy, addressing many of the issues that the state legislature, Denver, the federal legislature is facing regarding their policies on how to report for council member issues. The other piece is a requirement for sexual harassment training prior to any indemnification of any council member. Again, that has already occurred, so that's sort of a done piece for council. So this is a cleanup and agreed-upon resolution by the draft.
Okay. Now, that's what I was going to ask you, too, in agreement that you're ready to go forward with this?
Yes.
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, this, you've accurately described, it's a merger of the two concepts. I just hope as the policy is developed, and I hope it can come to the Management and Finance Committee, I don't, I think that's the appropriate committee, but it's fortuitous that both you and I are on that committee. I want to be careful when we look at the policy, though, that we don't either intentionally or negligently abrogate the existing council policy on censure of council members, because a lot of discussion, cussing and discussing, occurred about how that mechanism works. And I can, I can work on that when it comes back to the committee. But I want, I want the existing council policy on censure and representation not to be abrogated by anything in here. Just a very minor point, in Section 2, the council policy may not contradict the charter. Let me suggest that you should probably also say, or applicable state law, that governs a lot of the framework for indemnification of city employees. But I think this is a good merger of the two concerns. Lastly, if a council appointee is the recipient of a complaint, I hope the policy gives primary jurisdiction to the already existing Council Committee on Appointee Performance and Compensation. So these are just some thoughts that, as we move forward.
That's my vote here.
So, and I agree, it's a good, a good merger of the two versions. I just have a comment, and it's more just a comment for staff in the future, and that is, Section 4, that says council and council appointees will only be indemnified against sexual harassment claims if they have completed sexual harassment training. I think it's, I think it's incumbent on everyone, every time we have an election that brings new people on board, that they're very promptly have this training in place. Because anybody that gets on council could end up being subject to this, and they would be essentially uninsured, you know, whether, regardless of whether the claim had a great deal of merit or no merit. So it's just a point that it's going to be important to get that training done promptly after elections.
Do we have a deadline for when we want to have this done? I know it's not in there, but just generally speaking, because I don't want to just have a direction to develop a sexual harassment policy and then come back in five years and say, but we didn't have a deadline, so we didn't do it.
And I heard, one of the issues is, where does this get presented? Because there's sort of two options. One is, M&amp;F is being, one of the committees that this has always been referred to. At times, council, working on their own policy, has appointed council members specifically to a group. I'm hearing that it's to come back to M&amp;F. So what staff will do with our new HR director is, is put together a draft policy, more for discussion for the committee, because there are going to be a number of issues that are really at a policy level for council to discuss. We'll bring those back to M&amp;F. And if it's not, the next meeting will be the meeting that rests.
I had a comment. You know, I was reading through this, and I read the first two wherethes. And honestly, I don't care about the film industry and state politicians, or the NBC, Wall Street, Journal, Pulse. Do we have to have these first two wherethes in there?
Those actually started, that's simply from a, from a time when this started. Because actually, this started before all the problems at the State House, the problems in Denver with their mayor. So you can remove those first year.
I mean, to me, it's cleaner than, I mean, I don't care about Hollywood, and I care about here. I mean, it's up to y'all what you want. Yes?
Well, I'm just going to say, the only important parts are the ones that come up after the now there for. So I'm fine with the wherethes thing, as long as you pull it out and take them all.
Yeah, it's been in process so long, that you're right. The state legislature in Denver have grabbed the front lines now, so I...
The first two wherethes can go?
They can go.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a question. For us referring to the Aurora Employee Manual and the systems and the standards with that, if in the future that is altered or updated, then that would follow...
It would depend on how we put the wording down.
No, go ahead.
Yes.
But either way, we could either make it, we could either lock in our own policy that we would change, or we could tie it to the policy that as the policy changes, our policy would change with it.
Okay.
Again, I think we'll talk, this will probably be a study session discussion, we'll probably come up with a draft. M&amp;F will probably review it, M&amp;F will bring it to study session. We review it at study session, tune it, and then move it to the floor. That's the way I see it moving.
Yes. Councilmember Richardson, would you, since you referenced the...
Sure.
Thank you. Yes. So do you wish to move the resolution forward?
Oh, please.
Yes.
You all sit at the formal meeting on the 23rd, as long as there's some consensus.
Yes, yes. The formal meeting on the 23rd.
And we'll make the changes for that meeting and put a continuation page in the back.
Thank you. All right. All right. State legislative update.
We have a couple of items under this. I'll let our lobbyists start with the overall update, and then we got a couple of other items in here that I think Councilmember Johnston wanted to speak to, and they were part of your backup material. But we'll start with the state legislative.
Good evening. I'll make this real quick. You know, things have been tied up with the budget in the last two weeks. You know, committees put it on hold. The only thing I will mention is the marijuana consumption clubs that allowed for open air smoking that was not compliant with the Clean Air Act. That died in committee last week, so we'll be seeing that. However, the other open consumption bill is still in play, and as well as the marijuana delivery. So monitoring those, I know there's no official position of the city, but just monitoring those for your sake. And then Judge Day isn't here, but the bill that Aurora is opposing on bond reform, that Representative Nene Vides and Senator Fields are sponsoring, was sent to State Affairs, so I assume with us and CML opposing, it'll probably die in committee. So Amy's here to talk about, a little bit briefly about the budget. We don't have any actual findings just yet because it's still in play, but...
Right. So when I saw you two weeks ago, we were just starting the budget process, and the House went through their version of the budget, and then it goes to the Senate, where they pretty much scrap everything, and then the Senate starts their deliberations, and then they all come together and try to make nice. I think one of the things it looks like, and there are a couple similarities between House and Senate, of course, in terms of companion legislation, but it does look like background checks on employees having access to federal tax information is going to be funded, also digital trunk radio system. And that'll do a lot, mostly in the rural areas of Colorado. We've had a lot of bills this year regarding rural broadband, rural radios, really trying to step that up. So those, for sure, look to be the same. And also durable, really for the Medicaid issue, which really is not going to apply here as much, but there are two other bills that will. They're still going to hammer it out this week. They were hoping to have a joint budget committee this afternoon. They didn't. I think that's mostly because those deliberations actually are coming more together in private, which is probably, it's good, to find any more common ground. And we should hopefully know by the end of this week or early next week how that's all shaken out. So you'll have another update when we come back to see you.
Good. Councilmember Richardson?
Yeah, I may have missed it, but under Public Defender, it says Senate Bill 203 attached. What was it attached?
It was attached under a previous agenda, and I did not attach it, the new one, so that's my, that's my fault. I can send it to you, because there is a completely new version with the amendments that essentially gutted the bill. So the original version is no longer applicable, but I can send that to you today.
Thank you. And the pot club was part of the exemption, I'm sorry, maybe I was paying attention to something else, but it was PI'd, the conflict between a pot club and the Colorado Clean Air Indoor Act. Does that mean that cities will not be able to consider the establishment of pot clubs? Where are we at with that? Or is that dead now for this year?
So for that, it's dead. But both bills have local control options. The one that's currently in play allows, it allows for an accessory to any medical or recreational dispensary to offer, you know, tasting and vaping and things like that. Now, the bill that was...
that. Now, the bill that was proposed that offered pot clubs, that, it did allow for local control, but it was killed in, I believe it was judiciary last week.
So basically, the bill that was killed allowed for smoking.
Yes.
And would be a violation of the Clean Indoor Act that was postponed. Bill that's still in play is essentially the same bill, an establishment pot club, but you can vape. So it's in compliant with the Colorado Indoor Clean Air Act, and that bill is still in play. I don't know whether it'll move forward or not, but it's permissive. We don't have to opt in. Local governments do not. We can create our own regulatory system, should we decide to have marijuana establishments open to pot clubs. But that is really up to the council, should we decide to do it. Or you can take it to the voters. In the bill, it says you can take it to the voters and ask them if they want to have open establishment pot clubs.
Okay. How come Denver can establish pot clubs?
I believe it's in their own ordinance that they, they passed initiative 300.
Then that can, that, is that in contravention of, of existing state law?
There was legal back and forth. I think the initiative proposals who brought it to the, to the Denver voters got it passed and basically forced the hand of the state legislature to say, we dare you to stop us from, as a whole little city, implementing a voter-driven initiative, which they did not. And they have been doing those clubs.
Yeah, so far just one. One. Single, has, has been licensed.
Do they know a lot of business?
It's, it's hard to know. I don't, I don't, I don't really know. I'm not going to argue with you, I'm just advising my lawyer.
And no tax revenue.
Go ahead, somebody jumped in the middle. Who's been there?
So one of the proponents.
Sometimes it's no revenue.
A lot of the proponents are wondering whether any local governments will be, will actually avail themselves of it, because it will not produce the tax that your retail shops do. There's no, you're not selling any product. You're, you're selling very minimal edibles and other things, but you're not really, it's really a tasting concept, to be honest.
Right, with no tax revenue.
There's no tax revenue.
So as I said before, we have a real contradictory situation in Colorado, where it's, it's legal, but there's a long list of places where you can't do it.
Right.
And.
Hotels.
Gosh, yeah, gosh, how the tourists would come in and try to do it in all these places. So I'd like to see us get, I don't know, did your committee take a position on this? I'd like to get to the point where we can debate this issue.
Well, as council as a whole, as part of our guidance asked, you know, one of our legislative positions was to try and get the legislature to give us clarity on what constitutes public consumption, because that's the crux of the matter, is you're, you're essentially having a place of public accommodation. Anybody can walk in, it's a place of public accommodation. The industry would like us to look at that and say, well, it's a private club. Anybody can walk in, under definition, that is a place of public accommodation. We'd like the legislature to give us clarity on what really a, what, what really constitutes public consumption.
So I don't know if Pfizer talked about it, but the 64th committee briefly talked about it, and I think that our conversation was more along the lines of, let's wait and see what the state legisla, two things, how the state legislature handles it, and also we got some, I think, very good industry advice from one of the operators, and they had some, some good information, but also some, I don't know how to phrase it exactly, but basically some floating information, because they were still working with legislators on specific wording and stuff like that. So we kind of took a wait-and-see approach. So I have to be patient.
We're going to advise our.
We could bring, should the bill pass, then you can have the debate about whether you want to enact an ordinance, or whether you want to take it to voters. Then you can have that debate if the bill passes. Which is a possibility, but I don't know. It's sort of his way through. I mean, I think, and CML's really not getting too involved, because it has a local control option, so.
So they're neutral. CML is officially neutral as well.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we decided, correct me if I'm wrong about that, with the ad hoc committee, that we would regroup and reconvene after the session, and then, you know, take concern, you know, if there are issues that our colleagues would like us to, to review, but we wanted to see what happened. So maybe in June, we can, we can revisit it.
I'm going to regret saying this, but why, why couldn't we look at, somebody said there's no revenue, why couldn't we look at a, an admission fee to these clubs to offset some of the costs that, that we incur? Notice, I didn't say admission tax, because in my opinion, that could implicate labor. So let's continue to be creative.
But let me get this straight, it's a club, you can't smoke, but you can vape.
Vape is not considering, is not considered.
And all the edibles.
Yeah, it's not.
So you know what to do for anything?
Any, any infused product, you know, any hemp-infused product. Hems. So no actual, no actual flour can be sold there, you can't smoke it, you can't, you know, make your product there. So it's all strictly eating and vape.
Okay.
Yeah, other than, I don't know if you want to discuss the Senate Bill of 87?
Yes. Just briefly, I'm not asking for a vote tonight from my colleagues. I, I emailed some backup, thank you, Councilmember Richardson for asking for a little, little more time. We have the bill summary in it, but it was in state tuition for certain foreign nationals that are legally settled in Colorado. But I also have hard copies, and I am asking that it's on the agenda for next Monday. We can go into more detail, but then you get to, to read a little more backup and ask any, any questions. It was initiated actually by a resident born for.
That'd be a good idea.
Yes, and one of our, our, our member of the, of our delegation representative, Michael Sun-Jane was one of the sponsors as well. So between that and our large population of immigrants, refugees, that are under the definition of legally settled, I thought this would be something that we could take before you. But I just have hard copies here. I did the electronic copies for anyone who's interested, I'm going to pass it around, and then we'll just talk about it a little more detail next week.
Thank you.
Then the other item was the census.
Yes.
Letter that was drafted in your backup that.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnston asked to bring forward, so.
Yes, yes. It was actually two weeks ago, to, exactly two weeks ago, that we had the, the presentation by the census, and Councilmember Richardson had brought up that there could be a question of the citizen question being asked on the census, and the ramifications to Aurora financially for that, as well as originally, the census questions did have a question on LGBTQ status, which advocates for LGBTQ community have said that that is, is useful and helpful in terms of determining resources. A lot of nonprofits, community-based organizations rely on census data to, to know, to know our, our community. So I suggested, since we had that citizen question come up that evening, actually, the, the administration said that they wanted to include it. And then the LGBTQ community has actually been asked for a year since it was removed. Again, it was originally suggested it was on, and then it was removed, that we consider a letter to, to the administration saying our, our opposition for asking the citizen question, and our support for putting back on the LGBTQ question. And then I don't know if there, I'm sorry, if there, there might be more, because, do you want to talk about the League of Mayors letter? Or if I'm saying that correctly?
Do you want to have Councilmember Richardson's question first?
That's my vote.
Okay, I'm confused on the census, because I thought the census was just to get an accurate population number. So I, I really, I guess I'm, I don't know why we ask gender, race, any of those things, if we're just trying to get a population number, which is originally what the census was for, was because of redistricting. So I, I just don't know why we.
Are you confused about?
I'm confused as to why, why anybody would want to put their status. I kind of think it's no one's business.
Well, and it's voluntary.
It's voluntary.
And are you talking specifically to the LGBTQ?
No, no, any of it.
Or the, the race?
Gender, whatever.
Yeah. Are you, just so I make sure I'm addressing.
Right.
Right, are you referring at all to the citizen question? That that's included?
I don't think we should, I guess I'm just, I think the census is, is supposed to be, how many people do we have in our area? Period. So I guess I'm, what, when we say that we want to include another group in the census, how's that going to help them?
It helps the community organizations that are serving the LGBTQ community, so GLAD, national, state, local, LGBTQ community advocates have said this would be helpful, so we know what kinds, that they rely on census information.
Oh, so they could track their, that population? Okay.
And that's my vote.
Also, I think that Roberto, in the Pfizer committee, we also said that we were going to reach out to the Census Project, because they actually, to see if they have something that, if the city chooses to, can actually kind of work with them on that as well.
Thank you for bringing that up. There is a group called the Census Project, it's a nonprofit group that is advocating around these issues. We are trying to engage them, follow into FSIR, so you can find out what they are exactly doing. The U.S. Conference of Mayors, a whole host of attorney generals from states all over the country have filed suit on this question of citizenship, not on the LGBTQ question, but on citizenship. So there are folks who are, this is probably going to be resolved in the courts, this is, but there are lots of folks like the U.S. Conference of Mayors who have issued letters on this issue and other organizations. I don't know if NLC has, but I know the Conference of Mayors has, I'll look into the NLC, but there are other organizations who are advocating to have this question not on the census. But it'll, at this point, I think it will be a matter of, of the courts making that determination, what's constitutional and non-constitutional with the census.
Councilmember Richardson.
You know, I understand the president likes to watch television, but I, I didn't know it extended to Comcast, Channel 8 of our proceedings. It was kind of creepy, after our robust discussion, to wake up the next morning and hear that the decision had been made. We are the center of the universe here in Aurora. That's how I took it. As a process, the letter came out of committee on a two-to-one vote to include.
No, no, no. It was unanimous for the census, citizenship. The other one was not.
Okay, so we need to vote on both of those tonight, right? Because we're, otherwise, we're holding the letter.
Right. But it was three, it was unanimous for the citizenship.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any more comments? Okay, so what's your desire? Do you want to send the letter? Well, we have two parts.
Yeah, we have to decide, yeah.
Yes, do you want to send the letter?
As is?
Yeah, as is, with both parts, or separate them out?
I think separate them out.
That's my vote.
Yeah, I mean, that's just more paperwork, and does this letter do any good to begin with?
That's a whole nother.
That's a whole nother issue. I know you have millions of letters, how many do they really read?
Letters and tools, I guess.
Okay, you want two letters then? Kind of see a show of hands, how many want to include not asking about citizenship?
I don't understand.
I understood it.
Opposing the citizen question.
Opposing the citizenship question on one letter? Opposing asking, are you a citizen? Okay, wait.
Can I, can I read the votes on as is?
Okay, first, let's see, how many want to send the letter as is? Show of hands.
That includes the citizenship and the citizenship.
That's, that's both things on there. One, two, three, four, five. Okay. How many do not want to send it as is?
That just fails something.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, so how many want to split? Split the letter and send what?
No, we already just decided that.
So we just.
Well, we killed both. Okay, on one letter.
Right, we killed both on one letter.
But you know, we can see if we can do it separately.
Separately. Yes, Councilmember Richardson.
Do you have a problem with that? I, I'm suggesting we now take a vote on just sending the citizenship letter.
Right.
I'm a little unclear about sending both. Were you suggesting that that inclusion of the LGBTQ be signed by individual council members, being very careful not to say it represents the city of Aurora policy?
Thank you.
I just want to, I want to flesh that out a little.
I was asking that it go before the council, for the council to have a position, but if not, I know as individual council members.
Yeah, I think that just died on five.
Yeah, but that was to get, okay.
That was the line of the question.
Can we have a discussion of the reasons why we don't want to include the LGBTQ question?
After we hear what Ms. Allison has to say. So I just want to be clear, we're voting on whether or not we support allocating resources for the LGBT community by including them in this letter. And so by saying yes to sending the letter to support the LGBT community, we're including that to ensure that we can allocate resources, and if we vote not to include that, then we are basically essentially voting to not allocate those resources?
No.
We are allocating them. No, I mean, getting those resources that can then be allocated.
But we're not, we're not making that decision. Okay. No, we don't, we don't do that. I mean, we're not, that's not our purview. Councilmember Richardson?
Sorry. I, I wasn't. I wasn't done before the hour first.
Go ahead, yeah, but go ahead.
So I guess my thought process on this is that question number one, are you a citizen of the United States? I mean, with what's going on in the country and the current sense of people that are here in our country, that, you know, basically have to live underground because of Washington's failed policy for the last 30 years, they're not going to answer that question. And so the first part of this, are you a citizen, in my, in my mind, it's a no-brainer. We should not have a census that says, are you a citizen of the United States? Because you're not going to get counted if you ask that question. The second one is asking the census to add a new category and completely change. And I just don't think that the city of Aurora should be taking a position on that particular segment of changing a census. And so that's my reason for not voting for both of these. I would wholeheartedly support the first part, though.
Yes. That's my vote.
I'm trying to clarify what Councilmember Hiltz was trying to get at, and I'm not sure I fully understand, but I think you were trying to clarify that, A, we would be voting, there's a separate, there's a division between what we're voting on today and what we're implying by that vote. Is that, is that what you're getting at?
Yes.
So what I'm understanding, and I hope it's okay if she jumps in if I'm totally butchering it, that today we have the potential to send a letter of support, or not in support, that we do not think that the citizenship question should be asked, I'm obviously expressing my views at the same time, and that we should include a question related to the LGBTQIA, I don't know, there's an expanded acronym, as well. So remove and include, and your, like, thinking through it, thought process was saying, because the census uses this information, because we've heard from different community advocates that they use this information to allocate resources and appropriately fund programs in our community based on this census data that only comes out every decade, that by not sending that combination, we're implying that we're not necessarily supporting that. Is that what you're trying to, are you trying to get at? Okay. So I just want to.
Thank you.
I wanted to clarify that.
No, I won't.
I, do you mind if I also go into why I would support?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I absolutely do not support including this citizenship question. One out of every five of our residents is from another country, and I think that becomes very problematic, and I think there's already a distrust in our, you know, governments. I think that's more on the federal level, but perhaps it permeates all the way down to city council, I don't know. And representing one of the most racially and ethnically diverse wards with a large concentrations of, concentration of refugees and immigrants, I don't support that. I would support the addition of the LGBTQ question, because I think we're trying to capture an accurate representation of who we're serving. And if this comes every 10 years, we'll have to wait another 10 years to potentially understand who's in our community. And if this is a private survey, and it gives people the autonomy to express how they identify, and not pressure them in a. and not pressure them in a public environment, I think that's a good tool that maybe our smaller nonprofits don't have resources to be able to accomplish. And I think it's really, I supported to include both of them, and that's why.
Thank you. Councilmember Richardson.
Mayor Protem, hopefully, we can, in a few moments, take a vote on sending a letter in opposition to the citizenship question. As I said back in Washington, eventually, the cities, cities like Aurora are going to get hit really hard in a very negative way because of the composition of our community. So I'm hoping the Mayor Protem would entertain a motion to send that letter. Now, my recollection, we just defeated an effort on the LGBTQ.
LGBTQ.
So my suggestion is that staff work with us, who are on the losing end of that tie vote, to compose a letter that we can individually sign. That's how I think I would see it playing out, just in my opinion.
Would you like to make the motion?
Yes, make that a motion.
Second.
Make that a motion.
Second on the motion.
Okay. All right. Did everybody understand what he said?
Yep.
Bessie, a show of hands to approve what Councilmember Richardson said? Yes. All right. It passes. Okay, so that included both letters.
We will work on an individual letter with the --
So one letter will have just citizenship on the half of the city.
No, no, we're just doing, no, no, we're just doing the letter of citizenship.
The city.
On the city. On citizenship. Because the other failed.
They want to sign it.
Right.
Sign the citizenship. The letter that has both.
You just approved the citizenship question.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
Right. It's only, the only city letter will be the citizenship question.
Right. Do not have that question.
Do not have the question.
Wait a minute.
Right.
Right.
Mayor Protem, individual council members are always at liberty to send individual letters if they make it clear in the beginning that this is, my position is not stating, and that's what I think we're talking about. So, okay.
All of my letters could be seen.
Councilmember Richardson.
Yes, I guess, I think what I'm hearing here is that individual council members can, in fact, write the second letter.
Right.
On their individual letterhead.
Yes.
As long as they say it's not a city position.
Right.
So, and I think that's perfectly appropriate, and if you'll send me a draft, I will sign that letter as an individual. I just don't think it should be a council position.
You can do that, you can give us a draft.
I'll get two drafts.
Do you have anything for us for next week?
We're working on confirming the dates. What I'm going to do is provide a briefing book for the individuals who are attending DC, and I will include that briefing electronically, but I also include that briefing book in the, in the packages that are mailed out on Thursday or Friday morning, so you have all that material. But I'll send an electronic version in advance. The agenda's being confirmed. Given the volume, and I appreciate your patience, given the volume of the requests that they get, a lot of these folks don't confirm until literally a week out. Congressional offices are one, and some of these agencies. So be rest assured, we will have, as we've had every year, visits with all the appropriate agencies, they will come together, and I'll send you that agenda when I have them, along with briefing memos on all of the items, as well as the individual staff members on city staff that you may want to reach out to if you want more detailed information beyond me, if you want to talk to MAC on transportation projects or a need in recovery.
We do.
Community development. So I'll list, I'll give you those names if you want to get further detail. So those are the items, we'll be talking with them when we're at DC, so if you want to have more information, I'll provide it for you.
Thank you. I don't want to put you under any pressure. We just want to make sure that we're for the --
Oh, no, 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 it's a lot of material we have, all the departments are, you know, we have a lot of priorities across the city, so it's compiling a lot of information. So I'll, I try to get in a form that's easily, as easy as possible to read for you guys, so I'll get that to you today.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Oh, no, I don't want to be.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to, who's going to the?
Who's going on the lobby trip? One, two, three, four, five, six?
Six, Jason and I.
Nope. No voting.
Majority vote.
I know.
We snuck something in there.
Keeping that down, we're just preparing a Southern Maryland not to be seen again until it's time to come home, search of crab cakes. Yeah, that's right.
All right.
Find me a crab house.
Yes, thank you. Greg Hayes.
So you got to be, you know, three groups of two.
I've never been to like.
You hand those down for me.
So while Greg's getting set up, I'll, I'll give him a quick intro. So this is, Greg Hayes. Greg Hayes, thank you very much. He'll be here all night.
He'll be.
This is an update, we're going to focus primarily on how we ended 2017, what we think that means for 18. We typically do this about this time of year. The other thing we typically do, and we did do this time as well, we invited both the APA and IAFF. We like to do this kind of going into negotiations, just as a matter of transparency in terms of where, where we've at. We've done it a couple of different forums in the past, sometimes we've done it at an LMC meeting with them, but the last couple times, maybe, or at least the last time, we've done it in a public meeting so that council and both bargaining units are getting all the same information at the same time, and it's just a matter of transparency. So with that, they were invited, I don't see them here, as we all know, this is on TV, so if they're watching, hi Bob, hi Sean, and we'll, we'll, we'll go from there.
Thank you.
All right. Promise to be nicely quick for all of you. Just give you a little update, Jason's exactly right, we're going to tell you a little bit about how we ended 2017. It's good news, so, so there you go with that. 2018, we're going to go into a little bit about the adopted budget, what's all in there, and then after our whopping two months' worth of actuals so far, how we're doing with our revenue and expenditures, and what that means for 2019 and the future. So 2017 actual to projection, this is un-audited, by the way, at the moment, but revenues, ended the year about $5.1 million, or 1.6 better than projections, so that's a, that's a good thing. We're, we're over projection, it's, we're a little bit further off than I'd like to be, I like to be within 1%, but at least we're on the right side of it. There's two revenue streams that are really doing very, very well, and we continually were wrong on those. Those are audit use tax and audit revenue. Those two streams account for two-thirds of this, the $5.1 million. And I'm going to dig into that in just a little bit here. Both of these streams historically ebb and flow, go up and go down. Not, not recently they haven't. Sales tax, we're actually very close to projection, within half a percent, about $913,000, and on the right side, so that's good. Bad news on this is capital-related revenue, that's your building material use tax and equipment use tax, actually ended the year lower. So that, one, one thing that does, it lowers the CPF transfer, the capital projects probably got less money from the general fund in 2017 for that. We're, we're going to take some time to try to figure out how much of this additional revenue was ongoing, which means that we can count on it in the future for one time, which means it helps our funds available, but we really can't help count on it in the future. We're going to dig into that later on in the year. And when I come back and talk to you in the May timeframe, we'll have more information on that. On the expenditure side, we're better by about $3.1 million, it's about 1%. Vacancies, utilities, less than utilities, and the transfer savings, primarily that CPF transfer, since we didn't get the revenue in, we didn't have to spend it, so it helps us on the expenditure side. All of the expenditures are one-time in nature, which means that, that you really can't take that and have savings in the future, you can take that and spend it in the future on one-time items. Bottom line, we're $8.2 million better, so that is good news for us. Show you a little bit about auto use tax. So auto use tax, there we go. Auto use tax, if you look at how we were back in the day, back when I was doing revenue, and we, in 2000, 2001, if you remember, we were just going through a recession, and so the, the federal government, they went ahead and instituted a 0% financing. A lot of people bought cars right after that, bought some cars, and then we just sat around $10 million for about a decade. It just kind of bounced like that. Look at what has happened since 2010. That is 120% in seven years. And we're, we keep expecting this up and down, it's not happening. It will happen at some point, because what this means is that people are buying cars, people are buying more cars, people are buying more cars. At some point, you've bought enough cars. So, but it has not happened yet, we continue to rise. Audit revenue, audit revenue is another one of those, just bouncing around.
Greg, real quick, let's just clarify here too, so let's go back, and when we're talking about auto use tax, as a reminder, use tax is the imperative piece there. In Colorado, this follows the buyer.
Right.
So we obviously have, at least the state's best car dealers here in Aurora, they're on the Havana Motor Mile, so you'd be crazy not to go buy your car on Havana. But it's only our residents here in Aurora that we get the use tax dollars from. If somebody from Denver is smart and comes into Aurora to buy a car, unfortunately, those sales tax dollars go back to Denver. So again, when we're talking about, this is kind of throwing us for a little bit of a loop, it's, it's with that in mind, that we really are talking about our residents.
Absolutely.
It's not folks coming into, you know, the, the car dealers on Havana, that's great, those, those dollars get split up all over, so this really is just our, our residents.
And I can actually go into a little bit more detail than that. Auto use tax that an Aurora citizen will pay in Aurora usually comes in as sales tax, not ours, but usually. Auto use tax is almost always an Aurora citizen buying something somewhere else.
So since I bought mine out of the city, I, I still got my money.
You paid use tax, correct. Yep, we still got your money.
Don't feel bad about it.
Turn me a smile at the camera.
All right. Audit revenue is another one of those, kind of just sits around, around $2 million, but this, this bump in the last year has been pretty exceptional, highest in about 15 years. Both of these revenue streams, just to give you a hint of a slide to come, they're both still coming in strong. And they're both items that I can't, I just don't know whether we can count on them in the future or not. So we're, we'll, we will be looking at those. So in the end, 2017 general fund operating reserve up eight and a half, or $8.2 million. Because we didn't spend as much money as we thought we did, we didn't have to put as much money into the policy reserve, which means that the operating reserve gets to go up about $8.5 million. That's now, our operating reserve is about 7.1% of 2017 expenses. Policy says we should be at a minimum of 1 to 3, so we are, we are over that.
Councilmember Richardson.
I hope, I hope Mayor Hogan is watching tonight. I hope he is too, because this question is going to be very much in line with what I observed his budget expertise over the years. Let, let's call that operating reserve 8.5 there. Let's call that the cheese. And let's call the 10 of us here tonight the mice. Yes. I think you're hiding the cheese from the mice when you do what you're doing up there, and I'm not going for that.
But the mice are very, very smart.
That's taking the cheese off the table.
I'm trying to hide it, we're doing a very bad job.
Well, reserve, look, to me, a reserve indicates it's off limits. Now, if you tell me you're not segregating that into something that's off limits, maybe I won't be making my cheese analogy.
That, that operating reserve is actually a council slash management decision to stay within that 1 to 3% minimum. That amount is currently over that 1 to 3% minimum, so I believe in that case, it's, it's above the amount.
To your point, there's, those are the sum total of all the ending funds in the general fund, so there's nowhere else to go but either policy.
Right.
And Tabor, or the operating reserve. That, that's the only place for them to go.
We're the policy mice here. So how, how much over the 3% is that, 23.2?
About 4% over.
4%?
That's about $12 million.
No.
$12 million over.
Well, I hope the mice have been listening here tonight, and my, my second comment, I've been called worse. My, my, my second comment is, we had a very spirited discussion in M&amp;F Committee about the cheese.
Oh, yes.
And I just want to confirm.
We spent, so.
No, we're, we're, well.
Try to spin.
I want, you were in that meeting, right, Greg?
I was not.
Hi, Les.
Well, I want you to confirm that I asked a question about the spring supplemental and the, the famous Bergen-Richardson traffic control device signs. And I was told, I just want to hear it again, my electrolytes could have been off the last time. I want to hear it again, that the marriage between those famous signs and the spring supplemental is not abnormal.
It's, it's not out of the question or totally abnormal for a council to add something to.
Well, I'm having a night tonight. Thank you very much.
I guess I don't understand it. We had, maybe it wasn't as animated, but we had a very professional discussion at M&amp;F about the excess money. We identified that we were $8 million in a positive, we identified a council need for traffic control devices specifically.
18.
Well, and then we, we chose to have 18 so that we could distribute them among the wards, so I, I'm not certain where, I think everything was, was upfront.
There's more witnesses here.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
And it's on the ballot.
Councilmember Richardson.
Yeah, I think, I think the reality is that, that when we get in budget session or supplementals, six council members can spend that on whatever they want. If, if, if six council members say we're going to have $8.5 million worth of flashing stop signs, we're students, right?
Thank you. All right.
All right. Digging into a little bit about the 2018 adopted budget, and this, this is the general fund, by the way. The ongoing adds primarily in a safe city, flat reductions in, in other council goals, and this is seen right here, if you look at the total of ongoing adjustments, about $2.9 million. Safe city's about 3.3 ladder negatives and other places. One times are in safe city and also in transfers, move some money over to the CPF for transportation projects. And had 39 FTE. And by the way, if, if you want to look into the detail, I'm sure that all of you have the budget books memorized by now, but it is on page, page B46 is a breakdown of all of this. And I want to just take a second and go through just the FTE adjustments, very gentle, I don't read all of this, but I do want to point out, if you see these items with the little star, that means the council made an adjustment during the Saturday session. All right? So public safety went up about 43 people, 17 fire persons, 21 police FTE, including 18 officers, and I think that you added three during the Saturday session. Council appointees, public defender were added by council, IT got some PS comm, we actually just moved some FTE from the general fund over to the E911 fund, so it's not a net increase in there. Inner government went up one, that was the intergovernmental relations coordinator that, that you added during the Saturday session. Excellent infrastructure actually went down three. That was one FTE that, that is moving from one fund to another, so it's not going away. But two public works, vacant maintenance operations FTE were, were deleted. Quality life went up half, half an FTE, and that actually would have gone down, if you look at the bottom line, their pros had two FTEs eliminated. One, one they moved just to, to the conservation trust fund, one they actually got rid of. But then council took two of the neighborhood services people from CDG and pulled them into the general fund. So it actually did end up going up. Business and development went up 0.25 FTE, added a retail project manager on that Saturday. Well managed actually went down by 3.3, but the majority of that, if you look at that bottom line under well-manned city, police had two FTE that were moved out of the general fund and over into the parking development, or parking fund. And then in other funds, pros added 13 FTE for the central rec center, even though it's really not going to open up until very late this year, they, they got the FTE approval, and maybe I think one quarter's worth of, worth of spending on those people. And Aurora water added about four FTE in various conditions. Yes?
On, since those 13 FTEs don't really start until, obviously, the rec center opens.
Right.
So we allocated four of those 13, so the money, is that in that?
So, so in reality, we gave them a one FTE, but only gave them about, you know, a couple months' worth of, worth of budget to spend on them.
Okay.
And they do have to have people a little bit before they open.
Sure.
To train them up and getting ready to go. All right, so just another picture of that general fund operating expenditures, public Public safety is the largest share of the general fund budget, has been growing over time. Interesting, the last couple of years, non-public safety has stayed still while public safety has climbed, so it's added a couple percent, the difference of a couple percent there. Another way to look at that, general fund appropriations, this is all appropriations, including transfers and everything else, police is 32, fires 15, and then courts and legals another five, and then dispatches two, so the total of those, 47, 55%. And if you look at it in terms of operating only, safe community is about 65%, followed closely by excellent infrastructure, well managed city, which is a bright one, that is about 35%. Digging into a little bit about where our money comes from, the general fund sources, I wanted to point out that sales tax is 55%, and if you include the companion use taxes, it's about two-thirds of the money that come into the city is based on somebody buying something. So we're tracking the sales tax pretty closely, and what we're seeing right now is that we're actually doing pretty well. Two months.
Go back.
Hopefully, going back.
To the pot, the money pie.
This one?
Yeah, I don't want one of our guests tonight to go unappreciated. Where are we in terms of, no, you went too far back, too wrong pie.
The sales tax is 55%.
The one with the lobbying, lodger's tax on, okay, there, yeah, sorry. Where in the process of the pie making is the request that I recollect to enhance that? Is it in?
That would actually not be this. The request is actually outside of lodger's tax, it would be fee-based, so it would not come in here.
So.
So, well, where are they in the process? I'm sorry, the process?
Yeah.
I'm going to let Bruce speak to that.
We are presenting to the tourism transportation committee on April 24th, 4:00 p.m. So we'll make our presentation, including our three-year marketing initiatives, which will include all of the details of our plan. And Allison is chairing that committee, as well as Angela and Bob Roether in the committee. So it's moving forward.
And we're calling it a fee so that we don't run a file of paper, right?
Correct.
Okay? And Bruce, I want you to understand that I want to share with the committee, that those enhanced funds, should this go through, will be looked at in a very lustful way. And so you might want to be ready to get your shield and your sword out.
I appreciate that. We, in our three-year marketing initiative plan, it outlines all of the return on investment of those fees and information on how we'll spend it.
How you will propose that you'll, the mice, remember the mice?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Right?
You know, since Charlie brought that up, I just wanted to mention, when I visited the folks in Grapevine, our fund for what we're doing with Visit Aurora is in the neighborhood, excuse me, the budget, is in the neighborhood of $3 million. Grapevine, Texas, a city of 50,000, has a $23 million budget. And they, you know, I should have asked, and I still can ask for the data, but PWU, their convention visitors bureau executive director, says that he has verifiable proof that it comes back almost $10 per dollar spent. So just as a perspective, I'm not suggesting that we increase it like 10 times, although Bruce would like that, I'm sure. But I'm just saying that, you know, that was a very interesting part of the conversation, is what they spend on convention of visitors bureau and the return that they get for it in 50,000.
I have a question on that. So did they, where did they start? That's what I'd want to know. Like you said, they spent 23 million, and then they're getting 10 times that in return monies, but did they, like, start at 3%?
Well, actually, the convention visitors bureau in the city of Grapevine, Texas, they receive all the lodger's tax.
Oh.
So, and currently, the lodger's tax is 13%.
Wow.
When a guest checks out. They only have 18 hotels, but the largest hotel is obviously the 1,500-room Gaylord property. I just presented Angela with our marketing plan, and that information will be distributed first to the council's committee, and then to the rest of the council. It has detailed information. One of the co-authors of that document was the co-author of the Colorado CTO roadmap for tourism. So we extracted a lot of that data and information from the taxes generated in Arapahoe County and Adams County to present our case as far as what is being generated tax-wise. And as I discussed with Jason today, about 28% of what is generated from those guests from out of town is being spent in a hotel, and the rest is being spent outside the hotel, and it provides that data, so. Councilmember Richardson, I just have to tell you, I've never been in a budgets discussion where the term lustful came out.
Yeah, thank you.
This is, this has been hard, right?
I told councilmember Lawson, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make it more interest.
That is a trick, absolutely. All right, so looking at the 2018 performance, we're up about $1.9 million, so that's good numbers. About half of that's in sales tax, and the other half is in those two revenue streams that I told you about before, auto use tax and audit revenue. If you look at sales tax, where are we getting our money through two whopping months? Eating and drinking? Very well. $420,000 in, since last year, two months. Others doing well. Grocery, what is that? Clothing is doing well. Hey, utilities, a little bit down.
Mild winter.
Absolutely. Clothing, clothing accessories. The other thing I wanted to point out is that you look down here to the total of all other taxpayers, so what this is, this is a chart that we put out every month, it comes in that packet that Terry sends out to you, that's the top 200 in the city. The 200 businesses in the city that bring in the most sales tax to us are in that top list. Everything else is in that total of all other. So these are either smaller places, or places that just don't send out as much, maybe every once in a while, they'll send out something. We're doing awfully good through them. 11% up with those. On the operating side, we've got about a little over $1 million worth of savings so far, personal services, a lot of supply savings. I don't know whether that's going to be here in the end. It's kind of early to spend some money, for the departments to spend some money, so that will probably be spent in my estimation.
And for the public, the marijuana sales are not in this?
Marijuana sales are now in the marijuana fund outside of the general fund.
Marijuana tax revenue fund? I just sort of don't want everybody to think we have a fund for marijuana. It's marijuana tax revenue fund.
Good play.
Counsel heard that.
Oh, yeah, good point.
All right, digging into sales tax a little bit more, this sales tax percent change from prior year, the way it works, July of 2017 is 3.3% higher than July of 2016, and January of 2018 was 2% higher than January of 2017 because we're cyclical, so it's following the same thing. You will notice, through the first two months, we've had about 2.7% in January, which was very close to budget. February was great. February was great. And we're still digging at that, a lot of that is that other top taxpayers, so it takes a little bit more time to dig in. Yes.
Great. I have a question based back on the 2018 current performance with the builder line item, the building materials.
Building materials.
Have we ever, and I don't know if cities do this, I'm just seeing the smaller amount percentage-wise, and I know that we're building a lot, do some cities put in any provisions of saying, buy your materials within the city?
It's been a long time there. What was it, a decade ago, it was, it was by Aurora, that came out, I think from a council thing, but it hasn't, it hasn't.
Or even city projects, government projects that we could put into?
Government projects would be exempt, we would be tax exempt. So then we got to ask Greg on the building materials, is this?
This is not building materials. That's actually sales tax coming in on that. Building materials is its own line item.
So that's what I was going to say, so this is more of Home Depot?
This is the Home Depots, yep.
Home Depot, Lowe's?
Okay, okay. I just wanted.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So January, very close to budget. February was great, and March isn't done yet, so it hasn't closed yet, but we got a kind of a precursor look at how March is looking. We're once again very close to budget. A little bit over budget, so it appears right now like February was a great month for us. Yes.
I'm going to make some sobering comments at the end, but because again, I think we're talking about $8 million, somehow I think we are, but it's only 1% above, and it's because our spending is 1% down, and we didn't do the CPF transfer. So the numbers, the numbers aren't as exciting, I mean, yes, $8 million is $8 million, but in terms of our overall budget, it's not that much money, and we're only 1% or less than 2% away. But on this specific thing, the point I want to make on here, if you've never really thought about this before, this only works because we're growing. If we weren't growing, if we stopped growing, it would be down. We would start falling rapidly, and our income would stop, would start falling rapidly. So it's very important and sobering to understand that this is tied specifically to growth, and if we were, if we showed it without the growth part, it could be much more concerning.
That could not have been a better segue into the next slide, which is the long-term trend corrections of the same thing. This, and this, so the same slide, this just goes back to 90p, so that point right there is on the last slide. We are actually, May of 2018 is going to be the second longest recovery in history. So we are, most economists believe the US is approaching the late cycle, that stage employers struggle to find workers, which is very true here, pushing wages and inflation higher. S&amp;P said that there's a good chance that we're going to, as the expansion will stay alive.
Oh, that's a song. Stay Alive.
That's right. Until the summer of 2019 and become the longest ever. This is a great budget.
We've got ABBA and Moss.
I love this.
Oh, BG, sorry. I can get ABBA in there, don't worry.
I'm almost done, all right. The summer of 2019 has a chance to, is going to be the longest expansion ever, and that's going to be part of our 2019 budget. So one of the things that I'm thinking about, and you're right, $8 million, $8 million, it sounds, it's a lot of money. It is one time, and it may behoove us, because if you think about a five-year plan, 2020, 21, and 22 are all in the five-year plan, and will be far past the longest expansion we've had. So it might behoove us to look into being careful in terms of future spending. So outlooks for the remainder, operating expenditures are a little bit better than budget, revenues are slightly ahead of budget through February. This is not a formal projection, I'm just showing you how things are happening, so I'll give you a more formal projection later.
Question?
Yes.
These are going to be the two easiest questions you're going to get asked.
Yes.
What does it mean when you underline something? Nothing else is underlined in my report.
Emphasis added.
It means I, I, oh, I mean it.
Bold and polite.
Bold, but a good answer. The word discipline, what type of rodent in the plural decides how much discipline to impose, and why you're thinking about the appropriate rodent?
The rat?
Why, I call them mice. The discipline comes from the council, because, let's, I better not use spanking, that's.
No.
But if the discipline that we pick is wrong, then we get in trouble when we run for election.
Absolutely.
See, weren't those easy questions?
You're correct. And I will tell you, I don't think I've ever come up and said, don't have fiscal discipline. I think that's logical for this.
If this wasn't up here, I think there was something wrong with you. Because the budget office, I've never heard the budget office say, wow, we're really swimming in the dough, let's get wild and kinky.
Oh, stop with the words.
So this is normal.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, with all that theater.
I'm trying to get the viewership up.
I have to say, what I think fiscal discipline means, and I know you're all going to say, oh, man. Fiscal discipline is when 2019 and 2020 come, and I'm not here anymore in 2020, and you're 10 or 15 million or 20 million short on balancing the budget.
What, wow.
Don't slash, don't slash public works rodents. That's what fiscal discipline is.
Right.
You have to slash other things to keep the roads paid.
We need to move on.
Well, I support, I support him, and that's why, going back to Bruce, you got to have good roads to access the Gaylord property. So I think we're on the same page.
All right, so just real fast, there were cuts made, we do have some additional revenue, so it'll appear to be balanced in 29 and 2020, as long as we're conservative with adjustments. Oh, we've got some things that worry me, keep me up, the strong sales tax growth we've been having, it's going to be coming down. Auto use tax, I don't see that being able to stay at that high level. So we just need some fiscal discipline here. This is actually from the budget book. You'll notice we projected about $1.42 million shortfall in, or balancing necessary for 2019 and 2020. We think we have that covered, the guess right now. The future is a little bit more murky. Yes.
Just a point, if you go back, when you show the shortfall, that means, because we have a balanced budget, that whatever adjustments need to be made, we have to balance, we can't, we can't end up with a negative.
This will be, this will be zero by the end of the year. Correct. And this, this projection, which by the way, was just from the budget book, so it's not necessarily a projection, revenues are not based on any recession, sales tax based on historical trends, state projections, auto sales tax were projected to auto sales tax were projected to decline, capital use taxes were expected to remain steady, and property taxes are gonna soften somewhat, softening meaning not going backwards, but also not having double-digit growth every other year. And on the expenditure side, you've got 2.5% cost of living, 5% increase in your insurance. We are adding to 14 to 15 police officers every year that we started last year. The CPF transfer is at, is at the full 4% throughout the five-year plan, where you have a lot of the energy price increases, about 4% for utility built into there, and we are funding the personnel. So that, that is that.
Just have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes. You have no recession projected.
Yes.
So you really can estimate that there will be no recession?
I actually think that there will be a recession in the five-year plan, and I'm actually using the same logic that economists tell us, economists don't project recessions, they say be ready for one. It's hard to tell whether it's gonna come in and when it's gonna come in. But when it's there, you should be ready for it, you should plan for getting past.
So that's what this statement is?
That's what that, so if I look in, if I look into my five-year plan for my sales tax, I don't have it going negative in the five-year plan.
Okay, so that's within five years.
So, yeah. But, but that will then be somewhere between 10 and 14 years since the past recession.
Okay.
So that's why I'm saying that, that seems awfully long in the.
Thank you. Do you have your appointments with all the council members for their board meetings?
Yeah, well, I have most of them, but almost, but almost all done.
I got mine, council group.
Again, I want to get, get serious about this, and, and, sorry, I'm not as entertaining, but the, but the point is, is that we have to balance budget every year. So when we talk about a balanced budget, that's not something that we, we would like to do, it's by law we have to do.
Correct.
But that means when we balance budget, that we make hard decisions on things that won't be funded. As I said before, $8 million isn't that much money when we're talking 360 million and we're talking some of the major expenses. What we haven't done to go to council member Legere's comment, we're, we're $18 to $20 million short per year in road maintenance, which is why when people start seeing the potholes, that's why. So when we, we're joking about this, but that's a very, very expensive thing. The other very expensive thing are the two per thousand, because two per thousand takes, what I'm saying, two, two officers per thousand citizens of Aurora, or seven, yeah, the population. What that means is, is that we need not only the two officers per thousand, we need a cruiser for the two officers, body armor weapons, we need mechanics to take care of the cruisers, we need offices for them to sit. We're currently at 65% in public safety, that looks like that's gonna increase in, going into the years forward. So, and then we still have expenses that we haven't identified yet. We're talking about needing additional bunker gear, fire, fire equipment. We're talking about needing additional fire stations that we don't have money for. So we have some very hard decisions to make, and I, and I want to be very careful, because especially if we go up with the ballot initiative and we're asking for money, I want to make sure that people understand, we're making very hard decisions now, and we will continue to make the hard decisions. But the point is, is that, you know, we're, we're joking about $8 million, it's not that much money, and we are managing as best we can to make sure that the city is running well. And I want to thank you, Greg, and the rest of the team for the work that you do, and especially, you know, bringing in the outside economists, bringing in the outside experts, bringing in those people that can help us project what the city is gonna look like. Because the work that you do make, you make our decisions easier by presenting accurate facts in front of us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rich.
Well, I'm sorry if my entertainment has offended you, but there's $8 million, and this council deserves to know that there's $8 million.
Was there a question?
I'm not suggesting that the council be irresponsible in coming up with potential uses for that $8 million. I happen to agree that bunker gear should be included. I just want this council to know that there can be brought forward appropriate, considered expenditures this year that may in past years have been suppressed because of negative availability of funds. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Thank you. Greg, oh, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just was hoping that you could help me interpret the auto use tax and the, well, I guess mainly that one. Does that mean that we just have, we have more cars on the road?
That means that we're selling more cars than we have in the past year, or, or they're worth more, they cost more, which is, which is absolutely true. If a car, you're selling the same amount of cars, but they cost more than they did last year, you'll see growth.
But we don't know.
But that's 120% in seven years, I'm, I'm pretty sure that we're not, that, that the cost of cars haven't gone up 100%. So we're definitely selling more.
Registrations are up.
I was gonna say, yeah, we could, we could, we could go to the county and see if they can give us registration.
Yeah, we have all of that.
Well, I was interested, well, it got me thinking, because we had a, in our transportation committee meeting, we had a presentation about less rapid transit and like the, the future of public transit in the city of Aurora, and so you, we're talking about how this is kind of a volatile, unpredictable kind of situation. And if we're, speaking in generalities, if we're pursuing more public transit, this probably would go down. I, I don't know about, about the personal shopping of people when it, when it keeps going up and up.
I have a feeling that there's more cars in each household. Right now, I can tell you that that's true in my household. I will also, I also think that the hybrid cars are causing some of this. People are switching over to new types of cars and better cars and all that, which is causing this run in increases in car buying. Now, whether it keeps going, I, I can't see it keep going, but I've been wrong for a long time now.
Okay, and then also just like environmental impacts of having more cars.
Yes.
It's complicated, but I was hoping to talk through it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We have about five minutes for items from council, CML or NLC.
Little thing on CML, just another reminder, June 19th through 22nd is the CML conference in Dale. If you haven't registered, you're running out of time, and if you haven't gotten a room yet, you're really, you really need to do something about that, so.
You have to double lock. Anything else to add? Nothing else you can fill us with?
You know, see.
No, ma'am, pretend.
Yes.
It's my understanding, you're interested in, in running for the executive board.
Oh, yeah.
So we have to take an action before June 6th.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. So I was appointed to the executive board to replace councilmember Cleland, and I have to, in order to retain that seat for Aurora. They have three seats for large cities, Denver, Colorado Springs, and Aurora. Right now, it's myself and a Denver council person, and Colorado Springs is gonna have somebody that they're gonna have on the, on the roster, so, yeah.
We have to calendar that on the agenda.
We need to do, yeah, we need to do a letter of support to Sam Mamet at CML, and then whoever's attending CML, and I've got an appointment with, or Barrett Rex. There's Freddie, is it Freddie?
It's Freddie.
It's Freddie. They set an appointment.
But we should make it an official reaction, not action.
Action or reaction?
To, to authorize the formal letter of support for it, yeah.
Well, shouldn't we wait until he drafts it?
Well, yeah, it just needs to be docketed so we don't miss the deadline. That would be very bad.
I agree. Thank you.
And we, we, if it's ready, we could probably do something Monday night, next Monday night. We have a steady session.
I don't think it requires a formal action, it only requires a letter of endorsement from the council. I don't think you need to have a formal action.
That's correct.
We'll bring it from, no, I, I.
Just made a letter, we can provide it to you.
Got you.
Okay, do you have anything for Dr. Cox?
The annual awards dinner is April 25th. We, the city of Aurora has somebody receiving an award, so we have purchased a table. Abby sent out an email a couple hours ago asking anybody that wants to be there to let her know, so please let her know.
Where is it going to be, Dean?
It is at Hyatt Regency Conventions.
Downtown, but, okay. Thank you. Um, FRA?
Nothing to report.
Okay. We did break ground on the bioscience rebuilding last week, it's wonderful. E-470?
Yes, so we are looking at proposals for the road widening from Quincy north to I-70. As you know, we've done the, completed the, the southern part, so that's gonna be, we're gonna be presented with proposals to make a decision on who's awarded the contract, and then also probably May or June, we'll be looking at whether we're gonna do away with the vehicle fee, or registration fee. That is, right now, $10 per car.
Did you have some? Oh, no, forget the one. Okay, let me do that. Yuri is here to give us a, do you have a sentence or two?
A sentence or two. We worked with Roberto's office on the opportunity zones, which there are five of in Aurora now, so just wanted to let you know about that. There's a lot more information to that, I'll stop there, since I only have a sentence. And then we are actively pursuing a lot of international companies these days, so our, our efforts on that front are paying off. More to come hopefully in the next year or so with that, with those developments. I will add to Mr. Hayes' presentation that while there are plenty of, you know, industrial developments going on and office users are still looking, and we're hoping to get some Class A office space built, it is, you know, on everybody's horizon that this is a long cycle, and where we're headed just generally. So we are aware of that and trying to, to hedge there.
Thank you. Accelerate Colorado, if you want to go on the missions trip, it's June 11th through 13 to Washington, they have the venues and vendors finalized, and they are in the process of finalizing the agenda. So I think they're getting pretty full, so if you're interested, you need to jump on it pretty quick. Okay, Visit Aurora.
Okay, as Bruce stated, Visit Aurora presented their three-year strategic marketing plan to the city and their board last week, and that will be coming to be shared with council before the end of the month. Visit Aurora has already sent out 14 leads this month, representing 26,211 potential room nights, and 8,950,113 of potential economic impact to the city. Visit Aurora has launched a news feed featured on visitaurora.com, articles are updated daily and are curated from Visit Aurora's media monitoring service, Meltwater, which pulls thousands of media outlets from across the globe.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Gruber, you have anything for Aurora's sister cities?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. All right, let us move into AURA. Chair Hogan, Vice Chair Burden. Here. Commissioner Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Gruber.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Legere.
Here.
Commissioner Mario, present. Commissioner Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Andrew, are you doing this?
I'm sorry, sorry. I will cover, Terry was listed, she's on six. So what you have in front of the board tonight is a promissory note for $4 million, what this would be is a, is a very short-term loan, intended to be six months or less to the metro district. What this essentially does is buy us 120 to 150 days under state law, under Title 32. The metro district, who's gonna be financing these improvements, can't issue a notice to proceed, they've got their bids in, but they can't issue a notice to proceed to their contractor without funds in the bank. And so essentially, where they're at in their financing process, and when they intend, intend to be financed, would be probably later this summer. And then their contractor would have 30 days to mobilize after that. So we think this buys us about 120 to 150 days on the project. If we're able to move forward on this, the master developer anticipates the contractor mobilizing and beginning work before the end of this month.
Questions?
And we would be paid back, I'm glad the only piece of it, add is that we would be paid back within that six-month period as soon as the metro district finances.
Well, I would urge my fellow commissioners to support this, this is a no-risk arrangement. The sooner we can get these improvements in the ground, the sooner the city of Aurora can see tremendous benefit from the point at nine miles.
All that, some questions?
So we've done these promissory notes before.
Yeah, yes, we have. Yeah, we have, yeah. This is, this is just, I think it's actually the second one we've got on this project, if I remember.
It is.
Okay, any more questions? Ready to vote? All in favor? Okay, and if we can print the minutes of our last AURA meeting on February 12th.
Move for approval.
Second. In favor, all in favor? All right, they are approved. I have some questions, so who did that person a second on the resolution?
Resolution?
On the resolution.
I think Councilmember Richardson made the motion on the resolution.
Okay, and then who did the second?
Who did? Who made it? Did you second? It was on her.
Yeah, I seconded whatever the last one was.
Right.
Right, there was a lot of seconds, so I got Richardson for a second, I got Martin. But the resolution did we have?
Did you second the resolution on the? It's, it's, it's raw.
Good day, ladies and gentlemen. All right, yes, thank you. Thank you.